Good morning and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April the 5th. Sunny outside, I think we should maybe put chairs outside and have our meeting outside. Are you good with that? Is it a week? Oh, it's cold. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll start first of all with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Higgin. Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Dodick.
I'm here.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker.
Here.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel. She is not here. And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
Nine today.
Right. Start with the acknowledgements statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people of past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. I'll start off with recognitions and we'll start off from my far left, Counselor Dodick. Acting Mayor Dodick. Actually, no, I'm sorry, it's no longer acting.
No, yes, I've been demoted as of the end of March.
Right.
Or not demoted, but in a new position. Okay. Just a quick one, we've already recognized the late Senator Joyce Fairburn by issuing a statement of condolences to the family and lowering the flag to half mast, just a reminder to everyone. She passed away on March 29th last week and she was such a great person and such a spokesperson, not only for the country, the province, but in particular, Lethbridge. So she will be missed and thank you for giving me the opportunity to acknowledge Senator Joyce Fairburn.
Thanks, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just want to congratulate all those participants of the Southern Alberta Music and Speech Festival, which is on now. A lot of us here have had some nightmares during the, but incredible experiences at the same time. And just a reminder, the stars of the festival showcase is this Saturday over at the 8th at 2:00. So it's nice to have live audiences as well. Also want to acknowledge someone who's had a tremendous career already in Lethbridge, Shayla Miller, musician, senior songwriter. She just won the Project Wild competition. She beat out 11 other artists from all around Alberta, took home $100,953. So that was pretty amazing. She is really quite talented, so congratulations to her.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Mine has been covered. Thank you.
Right. And I'll go over to my far right, Counselor Middleton Hope.
Well, I actually have something.
Well then.
Imagine that. I'd just like to compliment Mike Mountain Horse School on their Looking at Lethbridge Public Forum that I attended last week. Young entrepreneurs in the grade three classes of Mike Mountain Horse School came up with some really innovative stuff. Surprisingly, most of it was focused on skate parks and water parks and so forth on the west side, but they also had some really interesting and intriguing ideas that I'm sure will be coming before council at some time in the near future.
Excellent. Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Just a congratulations to the Lethbridge Sports Hall of Fame. After 37 years of existence, they now have a permanent site in the ATV Centre. And also congratulations to the Allied Arts Council who worked with them on that. And recognition and thanks to the city staff who worked so diligently behind the scenes to make sure all that, the event yesterday went without a hitch and that the Sports Hall of Fame, all the work was done behind the scenes. So city staff are always working very diligently behind the scenes and should be recognized as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Croson. Counselor Palladino.
I have nothing at this time, Your Worship.
Counselor Parker? All right. I guess being last, you kind of get all of these ones that have already been talked about, so thank you for those. I do want to add one in. A huge thanks to Deputy Mayor Croson and Acting Mayor Dodick. We're on this rotation of six months of deputy mayor and acting mayor and appreciate the work that they've done in the service over these past six months. And to welcome the new deputy mayor, Schmidt Rempel, and acting mayor Croson for the next six months, ending on September 30th. So thank you for the service and to those that are coming in. Also, I just wanted to give a big shout out to Flare Airlines. It is great to be able to have them come to the table here in Lethbridge. And to our staff that have worked so diligently with them and with this framework that we had to bring this airline to our community. So it's going to be really exciting. Flight's starting on December the 1st and looking forward to having them and hopefully more air service out of Lethbridge. So that's great to hear. We'll start off with the adoption of the agenda from Acting Mayor Croson. Adoption of agenda, that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on April 5th, 2020 to be adopted as presented. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if there's any additions?
There are no additions to the agenda.
Okay. Acting Mayor Croson.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And have a resolution here from Acting Mayor Croson. Consent agenda be resolved the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City Council Meeting 2022-0322. And further be resolved that City Council receive the following as information. Status of directed resolutions, 2022-0405. And procurement summary report from February 2022. And further be resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following standing policy committee reports, 2023 to 2026 operating budget process, explore the creation of a community care campus, and community wellbeing and safety strategy programming, contract amendments, and council action plan, communications plan, and operating budget, community engagement and communications plan, and report on 2021 corporate strategic goals and accomplishments. And further be resolved that City Council provide first reading to the following bylaw, Bylaw 6350, Land Use Bylaw Amendments, re 8 Sunridge Boulevard West, and Bylaw 6357, a bylaw to repeal, Bylaw 3896, the smoking bylaw. Further be resolved that City Council schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022 at 4:00 PM for the following bylaw, Bylaw 6350. And I do have a question in the queue before we go to Acting Mayor Croson. Counselor Carlson.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Higgin. I'll let Acting Mayor introduce it first. I just had a comment on one of the bylaws.
All right. Acting Mayor Croson.
So yes, there are 11 items under the consent agenda. One of them we should pay attention to, of course, well, we should pay attention to all them, but 4.5, exploring the creation of a community care campus, does have $100,000 recommended funding and the recommended funding source is from council contingencies. So before we go on, we should question if we for sure have the money in council contingencies and if that is the best possible place for that money to come from. Under 4.6, the community wellbeing and safety strategy, we have several recommendations there that council would adopt and have funding with them associated with that as well. And then many of the other ones are coming out of the Communications Department and there are ways that we will get information out to the public about our action plan, about the operating budget, about our corporate strategy, et cetera. And as noticed, there's a couple of bylaws for first reading. So there's a lot in there and I'm not certain if my question is the same as Counselor Carlson, but I would like to ask the city manager or designate if there is money in council contingencies for the $100,000 and if that is the best place for that money to come from.
Mr. City Manager?
So I'll start and Mr. Matthews will jump in. So yes, there is money and as far as the appropriate location of those funds, Mr. Matthews can weigh in on that aspect.
To your worship and members of council, currently there's $340,000 in the council contingency. This is a carryover, or 220,000 of that's a carryover from 2020 and 2021, and there's an additional 120,000 in budget for 2022. So there's sufficient money for both the community care campus as well as the veterans' banner project that we see. As for the appropriate use for this, council contingency funds is for unexpected or things that are not within the normal budget process. And they vary from year to year what gets used from that fund. So there has been in the past payments out of that for community services projects in the past as well. And a lot of times there's things like the veterans banners or donations or things that, you know, sports groups that are coming to council or different community groups that council will allocate those funds to.
Thank you very much for the answer.
And Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I just want to highlight first reading of the bylaw to repeal, Bylaw 3896, the City of Lethbridge smoking bylaw. I just don't want people to get the wrong impression that it's going back to pre-2007 Wild West. We have provincial restrictions and legislation. And I see, yes, Counselor Dodick who brought that in in 2007, if I recall, ahead of the curve. The provinces not only caught up but surpassed us and so our bylaw is now redundant. So I just wanted to highlight that, that we're not removing all restrictions, we're just following the provincial restrictions from now on. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that forward because of course, when we first see that and the community sees to repeal a smoking bylaw, that would catch many by surprise, but you're right, the provinces already has theirs and we were fortunate to have ours in sooner and so this is good, but they have since caught up and surpassed, so thank you for that. Is, I would personally like to remove and vote on separately the, where is it at here? The 4.5, the community care campus. And vote on that separately if we could. And that would go into number?
Go into section eight, so that would be 8.2 under committee submissions.
Thank you. And I'll turn that back to Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you. Unless there are any other questions, I will call the vote on the consent agenda.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Deputy Mayor Croson, you're opposed?
Oh, no, my hand must have just been slow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. It's passed unanimous. And just to note, administration's recommendation at the governance standing policy committee on the March 24th, that the governance standing policy committee recommends that council provide first reading of Bylaw 6362. The motion was defeated by the governance committee, so then administration's original recommendation stands that council provide first reading of Bylaw 6362, which states, be resolved that City Council give first reading of Bylaw 6362. And this is from Acting Mayor Croson, Chair of Governance Standing Policy Committee. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. In the directed resolutions that we just passed under the consent agenda, there actually was some information related to this. And earlier this year, council has approved the establishment of the position of an integrity commissioner and the terms of reference were also confirmed. And there was, at that time, directed that amendments be made to the Bylaw 16125, which is now what's coming forward for first reading. It was also recommended that this position be funded on a trial basis and then that administration develop an initiative for the fall budget. And that is what we see before us, is the first reading of all of that. And what is essentially in here is not only hiring an integrity commissioner, but also opening up our Code of Conduct bylaw so that members of the public could actually bring forward concerns and complaints and it would make everything a little bit more transparent. So this is what the first reading would entail, is bringing that forward for further discussion. And I will call the question.
Counselor Dodick.
I understand that we are allowed to have a debate on whether something proceeds to first reading. Is that not correct?
That is correct. We usually don't do that because first reading is on consent, but because this isn't on consent, you can do that.
Okay. So Acting Mayor, based on that, did you, I wasn't sure if your comments were debate or just introductions or otherwise, I'm prepared to briefly debate my position, which is against even allowing for first reading.
First of all, start with any questions. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions, so opening debate. Acting Mayor? Croson?
My earlier thing was meant to be an introduction for why this is not as part of the consent.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Dodick. It's a debate.
That's already out of the bag, so to speak, that I will be voting against first reading. Yes, this has gone through the SPC and it was defeated by a 2-2 vote, which does show, in my view, a bit of a weakness in the standing policy committee process. So I'm still learning how that works and whether or not it particularly affects us or the jury's out on that. But I think this is one of those situations, and we've already talked about this before, is yes, it's been discussed before and the votes have actually been, in a way, all over the map. This is something that I feel wasn't needed when we first started talking about this and I still don't think it's needed. I think there are many mechanisms available for people to be able to complain about conduct of council, whether it be through the abuzment, through the municipal affairs, or even directly contacting administration or council themselves. This is adding another layer on top of the city at a cost because although it may not seem significant, you're still requesting for a retainer of 2,000 a month to a maximum of 50,000. My understanding is that the number of complaints over the last dozen plus years, you can count them on one hand, even if you're missing a few fingers off that hand. So I would ask council not to support the first reading of this and just essentially let it wither on the vine. That's my position. Thank you.
I too will not be supporting this as, what was just mentioned by Counselor Dodick, for very similar reasons. I don't think it was needed previously. We've seen that over the years and to put the cost into this, I will not be in support of it. So anybody else? Seeing none, back to you, Acting Mayor Croson.
I'll call the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Oh, we'll do this by roll call.
Counselor Carlson.
In favor.
Counselor Dodick.
Opposed.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Quiet or opposed?
Counselor Palladino.
Opposed.
Counselor Parker.
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Croson.
In favor.
Mayor Higgin.
Opposed.
And Counselor Campbell.
Opposed.
Six to two.
Counselor Dodick, do you have a motion arising?
Counselor Dodick, do you have a motion arising? I do. And the motion arising is that council direct administration. Well, let me just preface it a bit. This is a bit of a cleanup because there was a resolution that required certain things to be done, including, for example, the bylaw. So the resolution and the bylaw, now that it's been defeated, cannot stand in isolation. So that's the introduction to the motion. The motion is that council direct administration to provide a report to council to recommend rescinding parts of operative clauses 1, 3, 4, and 5 of its February 15, 2022 decision. And that resolution, those parts that are referred to are, number one, approve the establishment of the position of integrity commissioner and the terms of reference as in Attachment 5. Number two, direct the amendments to Bylaw 6125 as in Attachment 7, and that's the bylaw that's just been defeated in the sense that it's not being received first reading. Number three, fund this position for a two-year trial for the 2019-2022 City Council operating surplus for up to a total of 50,000 for 2022 and 50,000 for 2023. Number four, direct administration to develop an initiative for the position of an integrity commissioner for the 2023-2026 operating budget deliberations at the November Economic Standing Policy Committee. And number five, direct the hiring process to the Governance Standing Policy Committee. So as I said, that was the resolution that was passed on February 15, 2022. Now that the bylaw, our proposed bylaw, did not receive first reading, what this resolution is, is directing the administration to provide a report recommending rescinding of those parts that I just read, which are now redundant in the sense that we don't have the bylaw that would be supporting that particular resolution and I would ask for council support.
Just a question, Counselor Dodick. So number two is just because that was just obviously not passed and that's why you've left out the 1, 3, 4, 5, just for, you need to know why that was left out?
Because we, oh, we've already, it's not been passed.
If you want your glasses or I can pass. Just a minute there. Is anybody else, can see it on the screen or like a hard copy?
See, item two in the resolution, that had been done just today. So there was a direction that the amendments be provided and that was done today. So it was defeated. So what you need to do to clean it up is to rescind 1, 3, 4, and 5.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I caught that, but I want to make sure the community knows that, that there's not still some sitting out there. So any questions? On this motion arising? Any debate? Do you want to open debate?
Oh, that was my debate.
At your opening? And we have nobody in. Do you want to close?
In repetition, I'd like to repeat everything I said. Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries.
Thank you.
We have a resolution from Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee. Salute our Veterans Project 8.1. Be resolved that council approve 20,500 from council contingencies for the installation of the Legion Veterans Banners in 2022 on 78 light standards in four different locations across the city as follows. First Avenue South, old train station, 30 light poles, 30 banners. Area around the Legion, 12 light poles plus Legion flag pole, 13 banners. Fourth Avenue in front of City Hall, 14 light poles, of which 12 will have two banners on them, for a total of 26 banners. Airport, 18 light poles, 18 banners. Fifth Avenue, Army, Navy, AF Club, four light poles, four banners. And direct administration to develop an operating budget initiative for the 2023 to 2026 operating budget deliberations in November at the Economic Standing Policy Committee meeting for the salute our Veterans Project. Counselor Campbell.
I'll start off with, if there are any questions about the project?
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin and Chair Campbell, sorry, Counselor Campbell. Just a question on the operating budget initiative for the 2023-2026 operating budget. That could be out of the one-time funding that we have from carryover surplus, correct? It wouldn't have to be an actual operating ongoing initiative?
To your worship, to members of council, that is correct. Different scenarios we'll bring back on that and most likely be one time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Dodick.
We have other service organizations as well, like the Army, Navy, and Air Force. And I'm just curious as to, is there a reason why it's very specific to Legion veterans? Because there are other organizations that have veterans? I mean, it's more a curiosity on my part, not...
Actually, that's a great question and we do have representatives in the lobby and I don't know if anybody wants to, I hate to call you, if you would like to speak to it, if that's okay? Because I know we've spoken about this before.
Your worship, members of council, as to the other organizations in the city are quite correct, but you'll note, we presented an example of the banner and in that presentation, it showed the Canadian Air Force Association as a co-sponsor for the project. And although the Army, Navy, Air Force Veterans Organization in Lethbridge is not a co-sponsor at the moment, certainly they are very much in favor of presentation as we have proposed.
Does that answer your question?
It absolutely does. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. As I understand this project, if approved from the 10th of October till Remembrance Day, these banners would go up on these light standards, but the mechanisms that are used would be owned by the city and could be used by other organizations if they approach the city. Could someone confirm this for me if my understanding is accurate?
City Manager?
Through your worship, sorry, if the council could, if I understood her question correctly, it's the hardware able to be reused? Is that correct? If so, that is exactly it, is the hardware would be retained by the city and could be used for other purposes.
Perfect. That is how I understood it and that was what I thought. So we'd be purging this on behalf of the community, knowing that the Legion would be using it that one month every year if this is approved, but other groups could use it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to open debate. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Anytime that we can salute our veterans, it's a positive reflection on our community and this banner project is certainly one of those opportunities. Plus, the cost of the project is reasonable, as you see in the resolutions, $20,500 for this year will come from the council's contingency and we look forward to a budget initiative in the fall. So I wholeheartedly endorse the project and I would ask my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you. I do support this as well. I know going back here, it's been a couple of years that this has been looked into and we had the opportunity of taking our previous city manager, a veteran, back to further discuss this and I can't thank you gentlemen enough for bringing this forward in your group. It's a fantastic thing to have within our community, so thank you very much for that and I definitely will support this. Back to Counselor Campbell.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have a resolution from Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee, Community Care Campus 8.2. Be resolved that City Council approve a budget up to $100,000 with a recommend funding source from council contingencies to procure a consultant to do the following. Number one, conduct community engagement on the creation of a made-for-Lethbridge care campus. Number two, create conceptual designs for a community care campus. And three, develop a business case for a community care campus. And further be resolved that administration provide regular updates to the Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee at each step. This is the one that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Again, I will ask if there are members of council that have questions.
Counselor Dodick.
When I was looking at the package, I noticed there was a draft for review and it talked about, it says, "In particular, without meaningful engagement with the Indigenous community, the campus will be one more example of something that happens to Indigenous peoples rather than something that is co-created with the Indigenous community." rather than something that co-created, that is co-created with the Indigenous community", assuming that the Indigenous community feels a campus is a good idea to begin with. And then it speaks about an Indigenous engagement strategy as a strongly recommended next step to take for the Lethbridge community. And I do see that there was a letter of support from an individual who was supporting such a campus, and I don't know if you have the answer to it, but I'm just curious as to whether in fact there has been some significant consultation with the community referred to, and if not, whether there's intention to do that in the near future, and what that might look like. So I'm not sure who might be able to answer that, but, Mike, of course. Thanks.
Through the chair, thanks for the question. I, I believe it's important to consult with all, all stakeholders in a community care campus, and where Lethbridge is, has a lot of affected Indigenous people, where they would use the campus idea. I think we would definitely do a lot of consulting with the blood tribes and other Indigenous associations around, around Lethbridge. But as far as the campus goes, I believe that there is more information. The one summary document that we did attach to the report that went to the SPC comes up with more questions than answers. And I believe through consultation, that's how we're going to find out the answers to those questions, to provide council with more information on, is a community care campus what the city of Lethbridge needs, and where would be the best spot for it to be located? I mean, in conjunction with that, opportunity, Lethbridge is working on some social land banking. They would also look at these types of areas and see if we do have the spaces for that.
No, I, I'm not sure if this is coming as a question, or, or more of a, I'm looking at postponing this, and for the following reason, and I'd like to find out as far as timing goes, if it does, if it's going to cause a concern, is, last week, there's been multiple different questions and stuff coming in around, surrounded around the dollar figure, and understanding that, you know, we're working towards a community care campus, but there's a lot of different ideas out in the community. And I understand you just mentioned Mr. Fox, that some of this, this consultation will happen throughout this process, as, as far as where it's going, the business case, et cetera. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be a, a large concern on behalf of CSD if this was postponed till our April 26th meeting?
Through the chair, no, really, community social development has brought this forward as it's part of council's action plan, and we were seeking further direction. So if you want to postpone it, it would cause us no delay. We, we are just sitting in advance, waiting for council's direction if we are to move forward at, at looking at a community care campus in, in the city.
Right. I'd, I'd like to then put an, now, can I make the amendment from here? Do I vacate the chair?
Or a postponement, you could do it from there.
Okay. So, well, just as a postponement to the April 26th council meeting, and if we can put that, I don't know if we can put that up, or if there's any questions. I think I'm pretty much with my questions to Mr. Fox, is just, there's more communication that's still coming in, so Councilor Middleton, hope?
Yeah, just one word question. Why? Why the delay?
Just as more information is coming in, and just the dollar figure, I just wanted to, to get, to make sure before this is approved, that we have this information in.
What, what do we hope to get from this further research?
If there's additional, it may not be $100,000. There may be another option that comes forward that may be, it may be less to look into. I, I don't know. It's just some comments that came out since this was posted in the agenda, and that's why I just thought I'd bring it forward, just from what community has mentioned to me. But it's, Counselor Dorek?
I was just going to ask a question of Mr. Fox, is if, if it were to be postponed, would that give you a more opportunity to sort of coordinate discussions with the folks that you feel you need to speak with, so to give us a better idea of essentially who's on board and, and how much they're sort of supporting it? So I guess it's a two-parter. Would, would that actually help in terms of being able to talk to other folks about it, and then being able to come to council with a little bit more information that would allow us to make this decision that is being requested today?
Through, through the chair, I, currently, community social development isn't doing any outreach for information or further gathering of information. There is really lots of different camps on the idea of a community care campus. There are those that are against it and those that are for it. There's also, depending on what type of services are co-located, and that's where we get into lots of questions, and the community really is trying to drive at, what does this mean? And that's where the preliminary report that was done raised more questions for what is a made-for-Lethbridge solution for a community care campus, or does the community care campus make sense for Lethbridge? And those are some of the answers that we are, this, this report would dig into and come back to council with more answers if the community believes that it is through a well-thought-out process. Again, community social development, that's, that's why we're bringing it back, because we couldn't, through all of our research up to this point, determine if everybody or allocation or what co-located services would Lethbridge entertain.
I just want to follow up on that. So a postponement might not be able to give us any more answers? Is that basically what I'm hearing?
Through the chair, correct. We, we are not doing any other engagement. You may get more comments from public. We receive comments quite regularly from all different public agencies and from all different demographics on the idea of a care campus. There's lots of people that have traveled around the world and seen ideas of care campuses and bring back that input, and that's, again, where the preliminary report said, it really has, depends on the community and what type of services you're planning on co-locating. And that's, that's where we've sort of run into a little bit of a roadblock, and we can't look and see if we have land for a community care campus until we know what services are going to be co-located, how it's going to function, where it should be located. Should it be on the, as some believe, it should be on the outskirts of town, some believe it should be on the interior of town, and it just keeps going. So as administration, we've sort of ran into a roadblock, and therefore, we need to seek a professional in this. So a month would not allow us as staff or administration to gather more information.
That's because the recommendation is to hire the expertise to get the answers, that unfortunately, you can't give us today, so it becomes a bit of a circular thing. Gotcha. Thank you very much.
And thank you. A question I have, and I appreciate that discussion, because I was thinking that, okay, if there's, there's more information that's coming in, some of that information from these other organizations may bring that cost down, so you wouldn't have to look further into it. But actually, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, and actually, with that, I would, I would not want to seek postponing this, and I appreciate the, the answers. I just didn't realize that if, if in a month's time, you would receive information that could drop that price. So thank you very much. Appreciate the questions that were in. Counselor Middleton, hope?
Yeah, just one last question to Mr. Fox. Are you prepared to go ahead now?
Through the chair, yes, we would be, we'd move forward with an RFP process, so we developed our RFP. The Social and Cultural Standing Policy Committee asked us to do regular check-ins, so once we have the criteria, we'd probably report back to the SPC, making sure we keep them informed on the whole process.
Oh, yes. Great.
And just a final question that I have there, Mr. Fox. So it's in reporting back to the Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee, which would in turn present or forward for questions to council, is that correct?
Depending on the direction from the, the SPC, that is correct.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Carlson, did you have a question? You're in for debate. All right. Questions done. I'll open it up for debate. Counselor Carlson? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. I just, yeah, I'll save for the, for, for a close.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. I'm pleased to support this. I, I really want to thank our administration for the work done. I know that when council did our strategic planning late last year, in November, December, this was one of the, the, the issues that council wanted to take some action on and figure out some next steps quickly. And so I appreciate the speed with which this is coming forward, and I'm in full support. So thank you.
Any further debate? I too, as bizarre as this may sound, after this debate, will be supporting this, and I, I just, the reason, obviously, that I brought it forward, that I already spoke to, is, was the fact that I thought that maybe more information could drop that price down, but this is what's actually going to get us to the point of being able to make a better decision, having the business case and designs, and hearing that it's in, looking at multiple locations, not just a location, that is great to hear. So with that, I'll turn it back to Counselor Campbell.
Sure. Thank you, your worship. I appreciate the, the discussion here. We had a very vigorous and emotional debate and, and talk at our SPC on the campus care, community care campus, and as we mentioned, lots, a lot more questions were brought up. And so that's what this whole point is about, is to, let's find the answers to those questions, and I applaud administration, and remember, this is, this is up to, up to $100,000 for a consultant. A reminder, like, this, this idea has been in the works, or it's been brought up probably 10 to 15 years, so it's, it's nothing, nothing new. This is something that's been talked about for many, many years. This is finally coming to a fruition, time to come to the point where, let's see what makes sense, what works, and again, it's important to note that they will be coming back regularly with updates to give us, let us know how, how things are progressing. So with that, I, I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And we'll move down to Section 12, City Council Updates. Are there any city council updates? Jeff needs a haircut. That's the update. All right. Outside that, we will break until 3:00 PM. For a closed session at 3:00.
You would have to get the participants for that item. We might be able to get it for the land item, but we can't get it for the 3:00. You would have to get the participants for that item. We might be able to get it for the land item, but we can't get it for the 3 o'clock.
Hello?
Good morning, or good af- good morning, wow. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to our public hearing here for Tuesday, April the 5th. Bylaw six three five one, public hearing. Call to order the public hearing for bylaw six three five one. A bylaw to provide the closing of a portion of Plan one eighty L K twenty-sixth Street South. The procedure for this hearing will be, we'll begin by calling upon Donald C., corporate land administrator, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this bylaw will then be called upon, will ask three times. And if there's anybody else who wishes to make a presentation, city council doesn't have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. Then the hearing will be closed. Consideration of third, second and third reading would be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Donald C. to provide the background to the case. Just trying to get up the slides?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of the city council. I'm here to present you bylaw six three five one. Bylaw six three five one, intent is to close portion of twenty-sixth Street Southwest, sorry, twenty-sixth Street South Road right away. Dunlop Ventures Limited is the applicant for this road closure bylaw, and their goal is to consolidate the proposed road closure area to their property. Next slide, please. The proposed road closure is located south side of Lesbridge, as outlined in this slide is by the red circle. The affected neighborhood is Agnes Davidson. Next slide, please. If you look at this, the image on this slide, the proposed road closure is shown as yellow hash lines. The closed area is zero point zero zero five hectares, zero point zero one acres, more or less, portion of twenty-sixth Street Road right away, road plan one eight zero L K. Next slide, please. As you can see on this image, looking south of the proposed road closure, it's currently used as a green space. There's no utilities in it. Next slide, please. And this is the image looking at proposed road closure on facing north. Next slide, please. Hello? One, two, three. Okay, is that better? Okay. Test, one, two, three. Test, one, two, three. We reviewed this proposed road closure with transportation, and they have deemed the proposed road closure is area is surplus to the city. Also, circulation was completed with the administration and external utility groups, and there was no concern to date. Next slide, please. So this bylaw was first read at city council meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty-two. And public here notice was sent to landowners within forty meters on March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And also, this public here notice was posted in Lesbridge Herald ad on March twelfth and nineteenth of twenty twenty-two for two consecutive weeks. As to date, we haven't received any concerns or calls regarding this road closure bylaw. Next slide, please. In the MGA, there are three sections which relates to control of the road rightways within the city. Section sixteen-two states that the title to all roads within the city is vested in the city. And section eighteen-one states the city has control of all roads within this boundary. And section twenty-two-one states the council must pass a bylaw to close a road within the city. Next slide, please. To conclude, we recommend city council to support bylaw six three five one at second and third reading. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. C. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? As a reminder, presenters will have five minutes to speak to the issue. Okay, please come to the mic and state your name.
I just wanted to say that that gentleman said that people were notified. I found the piece in the newspaper, and it was about that big, and it was not, you know, highlighted or anything. And papers were supposed to go around to the people in the community. I know a lot of people didn't get. So if people didn't respond to questions and stuff like that earlier, it's probably because they didn't know.
Thank, thank you. And your name, ma'am, sorry?
Marilyn Hadford.
Marilyn?
Hadford.
Hadford, thank you.
Ms. Hadford, are you talking about the Dunlop land? Are you, are you talking about the other, are you?
This gentleman that was up here, he said that we were notified, we weren't. Because I don't think very many people got that paper that was going around.
This is regarding that one that was just presented there?
Well, I don't know, it's the one by the hospital.
No, we're talking, no, so that, just so you know, so, we're talking about something different right now.
Oh.
So the, the presentation is about the first public hearing, this is the land on the Dunlop land, right adjacent to Dunlop land.
Y'all, one section, but that's gonna be?
This is just two separate, just, just so I want to make sure, just for clarification. The first one that we're just talking about is a separate hearing, and the one that you're talking about will be coming out after we finish with the first one. Just, just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Okay, for a second time, is there any other members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, is there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it's now time for city council to ask questions of the presenters. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Hergen. Through you to Mr. C. if I can. The, the sale of the land is on, I would say, the west side of the cinder block fence. Are there any other costs involved to the city, or once this is closed, if it does go forward and get sold, costs will be on the potential buyers?
Correct, Counselor Carson, all costs will be on the purchaser, and there's no trees that needs to be replanted or anything like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon following the public hearing. Next, bylaw six three five three. I now call to order public hearing for bylaw six three five three, land use bylaw amendment re seventeen thirty, Tenth Avenue South. The procedure for this hearing will be, we'll begin by calling upon Genesis Avia Oreo, community planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this bylaw will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone else who wishes to make a presentation. City council then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of third and, second and third reading will be made by city council following the public hearing. I now call upon Genesis Evia Oreo to provide the background to the case.
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. Today I'm presenting bylaw sixty-three fifty-three, a proposed land use by law amendment for the property at seventeen thirty, Tenth Avenue South. Next slide. My presentation will cover the topics listed here. Next slide. The applicant is Seasons Retirement Communities Incorporated. Representative is here today to speak to you and also answer questions you may have. Their purpose for this rezoning is to eliminate the limitations on age that are, that exist on the permitted uses in the current direct control bylaw. This is achieved by replacing and introducing a new direct control bylaw with an updated purpose statement. Next slide. The property in question today is located in the south side of the city. Next. Within the Victoria Park neighborhood. Next slide. This air photograph shows a more detailed view of the amendment area. It's outlined in green. It's adjacent to a hospital site, the church, and it's surrounded by residential uses, including single attached dwelling and multifamily housing. Next slide. This is the existing building and how it, from the front on Tenth Avenue South and from the rear. The building was built in two thousand and three, and everything you see here, so parking regulations, building setback, building design is regulated as per the requirements in the existing direct control bylaw. The proposed bylaw sixty-three fifty-three brings forward all of those development requirements, and so this building and the site design is not expected to change as a result of this bylaw. Next slide. This amendment is informed by relevant planning documents, including the Sosa Skechem Regional Plan and the Municipal Development Plan. Next slide. The property in question was originally ten individual lots to accommodate, which accommodated single detached dwellings. In nineteen ninety-two, these lots were combined into one big lot to, and they were rezoned to accommodate a housing development that was never built. In two thousand and three, this property was again rezoned to accommodate the existing building and allow assisted and supportive housing only for seniors. Next slide. This, these two maps show a side-by-side comparison of the existing and proposed land uses. The proposed new direct control bylaw removes the age limitations as stated in the purpose statement, but carries forward the development rules and the permitted uses. Next slide. The proposed land use by law amendment would continue to allow assisted and supportive housing as it has been offered since two thousand and three. It will eliminate the age-based limitations that are listed or that is stated in the purpose statement. Beyond this change, the bylaw carries forward building and site requirements with the intent to preserve the design elements that allow this property to fit in well with a residential block that's primarily composed of small-scale residential dwellings. Administrative changes have been made, and notable change is the addition of a qualifying statement under the permitted uses, both assisted and supportive housing, that clarify that a medical health facility, resource center, shelter, and supportive housing are separate uses and would not be allowed in this property under this bylaw. Lastly, because the building and site design are not expected to change, city staff did not identify transportation or infrastructure issues with this property. Next slide. In terms of note, the proposed land use by law amendment is in line with overarching planning policy, including SSRP and MDP policies related to housing types, availability, and the equitable treatment of citizens. Next slide. In terms of notification to adjacent property owners, the city sent out two direct mailouts to twenty-three property owners within sixty meters of the property in question. The first mailout was sent to notify that an application had been received by the city. The second mailout was sent to provide information about this public hearing. For this mailout, an additional notification was sent to a neighbor living beyond the sixty-meter line as per her request. Ads also appear in the Lethbridge Herald, and this was advertised in the city website. From these notification efforts, I received twelve phone calls, mostly yesterday and today, from nearby property owners asking more information, and one of the most frequent questions that was asked was questions about potentials, the potential sale of this property, and of course, who the potential buyer could be. In response to this, I did highlight that the rezoning and land use amendment changes stay with the land regardless of who the owner is. Out of the twelve callers, eleven were in opposition of this proposal, and yeah, I believe a lot of them are here to speak with you today. Next slide. In conclusion, this proposal lifts the limitations that exist on age and continues to allow the permitted uses and the development requirements that are provided currently with the existing bylaw, and this proposal also aligns with overarching planning documents. Next slide. Planning and design recommends that city council approve bylaw sixty-three fifty-three. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Haru, appreciate that. Are there other members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? As a reminder, you have five minutes to speak at the issue, if you please come to the mic and state your name.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. My name is Charlene Shufflemeyer, and I'm a lawyer with Davidson and Williams. I'm here on behalf of Seasons Retirement Communities Lethbridge, G.P., Inc., which are the owners of seventeen-thirty, Tenth Avenue South. As you've heard, this property is zone direct control.
Just one moment.
I, sorry to interrupt here, I'm Shufflemeyer. I am associated with the law firm Davidson and Williams, and although I am not in, in a conflict, a community conflict pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, there can always be a perception of bias, and under those circumstances, out of abundance of caution, I believe I should excuse myself from this public hearing, and I apologize for that, but... I heard that. Anyway, sorry about that, Ms. Shufflemeyer, but I have to excuse, and everyone else, I have to excuse myself because of the possible perception, bearing in mind this is a public hearing, so I do apologize.
Thank you, Counselor Dorick, excuse, thank you for that. My apologies, you can continue on, Charlene.
That's all right. So, as you've heard, this property is zone direct control, which means that it was a unique facility when built, and it required council to develop specific development requirements and standards for this property, and specify the permitted uses, because the intended uses for this property didn't neatly fit within any one use under the current land use bylaw at that time. So, we brought forward an application to make a change to the text of bylaw fifty-two-eleven, which was the direct control bylaw approved by council on May twentieth, two thousand and three, and formed a part of land use bylaw forty-one hundred, which was the land use bylaw at the time, and bylaw fifty-two-eleven now forms part of land use bylaw sixty-three hundred. As you've heard, the requested change is a change to the purpose statement, which currently reads as follows. "The purpose of this direct control land use district is to allow for the development of a sixty-unit senior citizens living facility, providing residential accommodation, daily care, medical assistance, and associated services." The change that we brought forward was just the removal of the word senior citizens from that purpose statement. The current permuse, the current permitted uses for this property are assisted living residential care facility and supportive living residential care facility. Neither of these permitted uses restricts the age of individuals who are able to reside at the facility, and the need for the proposed bylaw amendment to change the purpose statement was necessitated by the position taken by the planning department, which was that this purpose statement created a limitation on the permitted uses to only allow this facility to be used for senior citizens. We do not agree with this position, but nonetheless, my clients are actively trying to sell the facility, and they want to increase the marketability of the property, and that's the potential pool of buyers. The removal of the word senior citizens from the purpose statement was the only substantive change requested by the applicants. This change would merely allow any individuals, regardless of their age, who require assisted living or supportive living, to be able to be housed at this location. However, you'll note many other changes in the bylaw which were required by the planning department in order for them to support the removal of the word senior citizens, including those additions made to the permitted uses specifying that those additional uses at the end are all separate uses and require additional development permit applications in order for those uses to occur at the facility, and those include the resource center, shelter, and supportive housing uses. So, if, as the planning department had stated, the purpose statement actually does limit the permitted uses to seniors, the wording that was used back in two thousand and three when this bylaw was first passed was discriminatory on the basis of age and prevents my clients or any future owners from housing anyone who isn't a senior but would otherwise require supportive or assisted living based on their specific medical needs. The current language seeks to restrict the user of the lands rather than the use of the lands, and that's been held by courts and subdivision and appeal boards to be a consideration that's not a sound planning consideration. And my client says the current owners do not and will not have any control over any change in use that a new owner may decide to apply for, particularly the ones that I think that the planning department and likely the public are concerned about, namely supportive housing and shelter uses. But the issue before you today is simply whether to remove two words from the purpose statement that the planning department has held to be limiting, albeit unlawfully limiting, on the permitted uses approved for this facility. Any other changes would require additional steps to be taken by whoever that new owner ends up being. When or if those steps are taken would be the appropriate time for council and the public to address concerns that they have about who the new owner is or what that new owner may be planning to do with this facility. Therefore, we ask council to support this amendment so that the language that the planning department is holding to limit the permitted uses can be removed, and that this facility can be sold and marketed to its full potential, which is as an assisted living residential care facility and a supportive living residential care facility, free of age restrictions, which is how the permitted uses are currently worded. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this afternoon. Those are my submissions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We'll go through if there's any other one else that needs to speak, and if the questions come up later, we'll ask you to come up to the mic. Thank you very much.
Very much.
For a second time, is there any member of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Please come to the mic and state your name.
Hi there, my name is Ally Walker. Thanks for allowing us to speak today, have this opportunity. And first, I just wanted to apologize that this is, you know, in the final readings, and that that's when we're coming forward, or when I'm coming forward. But I just found out about this a few days ago on the weekend, on Saturday, and was interested because I'm someone that lives within a two or three block radius of this building. I also work in the hospital in the emergency room, I'm very familiar with, with what exists currently in that location. And, you know, if, if I had received one of the notices, which was a fairly small reach, especially given the fact that many of the local buildings are clinics, church, hospital, so there aren't a lot of residents that were reached with this potential bylaw change, so I was unfamiliar with it, and started to ask questions about it, and then had learned that all of the seniors who currently live or had lived in this building had already been moved, moved out of the building. They were given till the end of March to move out, and that there are contractors on site, and that things are changing, and it kind of got my, for lack of a better word, my spidey senses about why an owner, and it's also, I could see on the Seasons website that they were putting it up for sale, and I, I thought it seemed very strange that if they are selling the property, why would they be interested in changing the bylaw, especially if there was already action towards a potential buyer because the residents are moving out? So, it started making me ask questions about what is this property being used for. There are lots of rumors, yes, I'm not here to talk about rumors, I'm here to say there wasn't a lot of transparency around decisions, and it, and it makes me wonder too, like, why if Seasons, I understand changing language around discrimination of senior citizen, that makes sense to me. I understand that language should be equitable, but I would be interested to know if they are changing the language for their other property on the west side, or if other senior centers in Lethbridge are pursuing the same bylaw change to reflect that discriminatory language. I find it all very, sort of backwards maybe, and maybe that there's some underhand dealings going on that I don't think is right or fair to the public to not be more transparent about what the intentions for that property are. And I understand, as the previous speaker spoke, that there will be further potential bylaws that would have to be brought forward. But under bylaw fifty-two-eleven, as it was previously, it does open a lot of doors for potential housing options, for example, detox, transition housing. It opens the door already when you remove that age, age limit. So, if it's intended to be sold and used as senior facility, also, I didn't like the language around making it more equitable and inclusive when a whole bunch of seniors were kicked out of their homes essentially. That doesn't seem very inclusive, especially when seniors living in Lethbridge is already limited as well. So, it makes me feel like there's something going on afoot that the community hasn't been made aware of, especially with regard to the planning going on in Victoria Park. I think this would be very relevant to have more information. So, I guess my question is, or my request, is that it be tabled. I'm not saying that I oppose it because I don't really understand it, I'm, I have a lot of questions, and I think the community has a lot of questions about why this is happening and why it seems a bit secretive and underhanded. So, I guess requesting that it be tabled, and that the seller, potential buyer, whoever might offer more information or more insight on what the planned uses are for that, given that the residents have already been displaced, and that there are contractors in there doing work. So, clearly, there's, are some plans in the works, so. I think that's all I have to say, I mean, I could add lots of things, but based on the issue today, I think it's that it be tabled so that we can get more information about the reason for a seller asking for a bylaw to be a change that will not affect the seller at all, but maybe in some way scratching the back of the buyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. And next, if you have some, please come, please, we don't have any that in the gallery. Please state your name.
I am Sean Preble. My wife and I live at seventeen-thirty-three, Eleventh Avenue South, just a couple blocks from the location, and we also own ten-fourteen, Eighteenth Street South, was, which is directly adjacent to the parking lot of this building. So, I have watched, as she said, I've watched, I, I bought that building for the purposes about last June to gut and fix up and sell. I bought that building because it's a nice area, and the difference of a quiet seniors-assisted building versus removing that age, which opens up a huge ballpark of opportunities compared to what's there now. So, yeah, I, it's, it's directly gonna affect me, right? And I find it odd that the lawyer gave us that spiel, and the only thing that was talked about was how can we, how can the, how can the owners increase their revenues? Not one study of the neighborhood. As you can tell, most of the people were misinformed about this or barely knew about it. Not one study to, to see if, like, this is actually needed in this location, if the location makes sense for what they're proposing, and, and as the neighbors, it's tough to have to come to this meeting with just rumors, right? And I'm sorry, I, I've been a landlord for a long time. I actually promote my building, an eight-plex, as senior in the paper because it's, it's a need, right? And you'd think the best purpose for that building right next to the hospital would be that senior center, right? If they can make the connection of these other organizations that want to go in that building, that they need to be right there in that spot next to, like we said, churches, schools, and the hospital. My wife that walks to the hospital, she works at the hospital, I see lots of people walking in the neighborhood to the, to the hospital, five in the morning. Is, is that safety of the neighborhood gonna be the same as it was before with these proposed changes? Very unlikely. I mean, by the way, the letters were wording, like the, the last lady said, it's, it's pretty easy to see what, what the writing on the wall is here and what they're trying to do, right? I mean, I agree with her, it should be tabled until there's further discussion, maybe there's some reasoning as to why you would do that, because that change in age is a big difference, right? So, and I wasn't aware that senior citizens was an age discrimination nowadays. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next, you come forward, state your name, please, thank you.
Your worship, it's good to be here, council members. I'm Gary Bowey, who has had a little bit of a record with regard to appearing before this coun, before, not this council, but before councils before, and for some reason or other, I'm scared to death. I don't know if all the words will come to me, and I, I am, I am a little bit concerned about what I've heard. I didn't find out about this until just the other day, and I've been scrambling a little bit to try to find out a little bit more about it, and thankfully, the department sent me some information yet, last night and today, which I was able to read a little bit about, so it, it was helpful to be able to get some of that information. But it seems a little bit strange to me that this is, this is taking, it seems a little bit strange to me that this is, this is taking place and we're trying to change the age when we do need seniors, seniors housing. So, that said, we all know that that's a, a fact in life, and, and I, I'm one of those who really know that that's a fact of life at this point in time, in my, my period of time, you know? I'm one of those kind of people that don't even buy green bananas. Because I won't be able to use them more than likely. So, I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about infrastructure, and I, I just want to make a point with regard to, if this is going to be moving towards a younger age group, then we have to consider that there's going to have to be more parking in that area for that to take place. And so, I don't know if much has been done, it's a sixty, sixty, um... rooms, units in the, in the, in the facility, and so obviously, if there's going to be younger people, there's going to be more and more cars, and I don't know if there's enough space there. So, that's a concern about the infrastructure with regard to that, so I'm, I'm worried about that. One of the things that I was able to get a hold of was one of the individuals who was told that they had to, to move out, uh... by the first of April because they were going to be selling the facility, and this is a wonderful senior that, and of course, I'm a wonderful senior also, and, and so we need to make sure, I think, that, that we're not taking away from a, a need area in this, in this, but there must be something that I don't know about, that's not being laid out for me to, to fully understand what's going on. The other thing I, I'm concerned about is on page three of the document that I was provided, which goes into a number of different factors that, yeah, page three, in the middle of the page, it starts talking about assisted living residence care and so on and so forth, and it goes into medical health facilities and resource center and shelter and supportive housing and our separate uses, and so I'm wondering, at this point in time, what does that mean? Does that mean we can't, that they won't be putting shelters in, in that area and so on and so forth? Or does, do they have to come back? Or does, do they have to come back and talk to, to you folks with regard to, to being able to use it for those kind of purposes or, or whatever? So I don't totally understand what's being done here. It, it bothers me to, to a degree that I got off of my chair and, and I'm here expressing a concern. I, I really do believe that more information needs to come forward. And I think this matter should be tabled and so that we can have, so that all folks can have more time. We, we really need to know who's going to be involved in that process, the buyers and that sort of thing. So that we know that we're not putting something in there that's going to be really a tax on that, on that area. In, in my situation, I just, just finally got on a committee with the city again, one committee, one, just one. And it's on planning and in that area, Victoria Park area, that, that part of our community is really pushed, being pushed at this point in time with a hospital, six or seven schools and so on and so forth. So I think we need to be careful on what we're doing with that part of the, part of our city. That neighborhood is going to be working on a plan and I think we should at least wait until that plan is presented to you and then we might be able to make more sense of what we're doing. So I appreciate very much the opportunity to be able to, to talk to you for a little bit and I probably went over time. I didn't mean to. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bowie. And please, we can't, we can't have the clapping in the gallery. I know if you're for or against a presenter. If we just keep decorum, please, thank you. So, Ace, is there anybody else would like to make a presentation on this? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Jess Wild. I am a lawyer here in the city of Lethbridge. Your worship, councilors, I'm voluntarily appearing on behalf of a group of residents, all of whom reside in the vicinity of this facility, although outside the limited geographic notice provisions of this proposed bylaw amendment. I'm here not to repeat, but to speak to the nature of the direct control bylaw amendment application. Initially, as it was advertised, it was innocuously phrased as simply removing the term senior citizens so that the bylaw would fall in line with the equitable treatment of all Lethbridge residents. Now, who would dispute that? And so those who, of us, not one, not, I didn't see it from the outset, but those of us who may have seen it could not in its first blush have had any problem with, with that suggestion. However, as this council is aware, direct control zones in the city of Lethbridge and in other Alberta municipalities, those direct control zones are extraordinary in their zoning designation. Extraordinary in terms of the bylaw proposed and also the terminology. And also extraordinary in the sense of requiring a heightened level of scrutiny and care in both adopting them and also amending them. And so it is under these circumstances that direct zoning amendments and bylaws themselves are so unique that under the legislation, they can only be passed by council and have to come before this body. Here, the owner approaches the council for an amendment that on its face, as mentioned, is equity for all. And who would dispute that? Let's simply remove the term senior citizens and then come what may because we'll treat all Lethbridge residents equitably. But I would say on behalf of my constituents, hold on for a moment and let's not rush into a decision. It remains after all a direct control amendment, an extraordinary one, and from the city's own website, it says to manage special one-of-a-kind situations and uses. But we know nothing about the use intended here. And as a lawyer in my own private practice, we often have offers that are subject to bylaw amendments for a new use and a new direct control bylaw amendment that then goes in front of the city where a full array of, of, you know, discussion and so forth on the intended use is again addressed by this council to determine whether the ultimate result is in the best interests of this community and also the community surrounding the particular parcel. We know nothing here about why the owner intends this amendment. I would hazard to say that it's not because he's the champion of equity for all. I would rather guess, and guesses cause concern for everyone, that council needs more information. And more information from the seller, the proposed use of the subject property, the possible uses of the subject property, because again, I would heighten a level of concern for this group and others who are listening, that ultimately when a direct control bylaw passes, and if this amendment removes the term senior citizens, then the permitted use under the bylaw, then this council and the residents of the city have little forum to object to future uses that may fall within the parameters of the amended bylaw. Council is the guardian of direct control amendments, and I would emphasize that, that this council, which is the only body that can amend a specific direct control amendment, must make decisions in the best interests of the city. With respect to Ms. Shufflemeyer and her representations, she speaks to the intended uses, but as so far as I am aware, this group, council, the decision maker, knows nothing about those intended uses. And it's the whys in this application that have never been addressed or answered at all. It's been pushed through with little notice, no opposition, little discussion. And for the blatant reason that on the face of the amendment, it's all about inclusiveness and we're including all of Lethbridge as opposed to discriminating against everyone except senior citizens. Well, ironically, as it's been indicated, those senior citizens who were actually users of this property are now no longer. And so we could speculate about the why and speculation causes concern, worry, creates images about this facility being used for purposes that might be better used not in my backyard, but somewhere else. But the point is that council as the decision maker does not know any of that. And so it's my submission that this council should not rush to judgment, or better put, not rush to amendment, but that this council should find more about the why before a direct control amendment to this bylaw is adopted. And those are my submissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. Please. And is there anybody else that'd like to make a presentation on this matter? Please cover the mic and state your name.
My name is Ed Wilson and I just have a few comments to make. First of all, I live in the vicinity of this facility as well. And as you can see from the comments we've heard today, this decision potentially could impact a wide area of South Lethbridge. And because of that, I think it would have been prudent to have expanded your sixty-meter notification zone to further, further than that. Sixty meters is only three or four houses from the, from the actual property, if you think about it. And secondly, as Mr. Bowie indicated, he's on a Victoria Park Planning Committee. It, it would seem to me that that would be a good place to start with proposals related to a change of, of status for that particular building. Now, as you all know, as, as members of city council and as citizens of Lethbridge, Lethbridge is a magnet for senior citizens. They come from all over the prairies and, and settle here and retire here. And as a result, we do not have enough space for them. I can speak personally to this. I've had four members of my own family that had the privilege of accessing assisted living spaces in Lethbridge. But before they could get into an assisted living setting, they had to wait. And two of them were, had an extended stay in the hospital on the fifth floor for weeks and weeks and weeks. And a third one was asked to take a place elsewhere than Lethbridge, away from her family and her friends and her church and her support, which is telling me that we don't have enough senior citizens accommodations, assisted living accommodations. Why would we propose a bylaw that would take more spaces away from our citizens? Sixty more spaces, as it turns out. Why would we do that? That does not make sense to me. And as councilors, as the city councilors, I, I hope you can see my logic in this and I, I, I would ask you to table this or to oppose it in any, whatever the correct process is. And I thank you for being allowed to make my presentation, your worship. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Wilson. And we do have, anyone else wishing to speak? All right.
Your honor.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Kevin Bosnick. We live just, we were, we were within the baseball throw, so we actually got the flyer. Actually, we're not planning to sell. We bought many years, you know, six, seven years ago. Everything about, all of it, I get. My, my biggest thing, you guys, is man, we've had a guy walk through our back gate that now I have locked down with a gun and a knife into our house. My kids' bikes got stolen before Christmas this year that we had to replace. All of this being said, I can assure you, it was not from senior citizens. I'm absolutely scared, petrified to send my twins out the door in the mornings to bike up that way on their way to Agnes Davidson, or not, CCH area. Please don't, don't lower the H. That's all I can say. I just like, that's about it in a nutshell, you guys. That's as simple as it is. Like, jeez, I don't know if it, the more people that say something, if we get more numbers or something, maybe then you guys won't allow it, you know? I know I'm just a guy in work boots, I'm no, nowhere close. But man, it's getting scary out there anyhow, let alone throwing seniors out on the road and bringing in the next level of whatever happens. If you pass it, then please just make sure that you allow me to put barbed wire on this, on the fence because that's about the way we're getting to. Sorry, guys.
Thank you for your presentation. Is anyone else would like to make a presentation? Please come to the mic, state your name.
My name's Aaron Olford. I live on Eighteenth Street and we really enjoyed watching the seniors, the seniors that come down the sidewalk for their walks. It's fantastic. You know, they're a part of the neighborhood. They, they're great people and it'd be a shame to have that change. And please, get more information before you make a decision.
Very much. And I do have Ms. Hadford, if you wanted to speak again, we do have the information. I don't know if you wanted to, to bring that forward again, your comments, but, okay, please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Doff. I live at ten thirty-six Seventeen Eighth Street South. I got another house on Seventeenth. We have a boxing club in Lethbridge. It's successful. I've been downtown Calgary and it's pretty bad down there. You don't want it on, on tenth and eleventh, ever. And you guys are making a mistake by putting those people in there. I guarantee you, because I will sell out all my properties in Lethbridge. Maybe not the boxing club, because we're in the World Olympics. And I know some of you guys here pretty well. So I hope you make a good decision on this because that other place has gone to two or three different places. And it's not a place to put where the real estate people are and, and the old seniors are. And we've had that house at ten thirty-six since nineteen sixty. That's a long, long time ago. And so we like it here, but we can sell out. I don't need a real estate person. I can sell a house by myself. And I'm gone if you guys put that place in here. Thanks a lot, that's all.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a presentation on this matter? Please come forward and state your name.
Charlie Boss. I live on Eighteenth Street, within stone throw of that building. My one and only concern is they're gonna condomize it. From any stuff I've read and listening today, the opportunity is there for it and that's fine. But we do not have the ability to handle the traffic, especially when the hospital goes back in full operation again. That south entrance has been blocked off and our traffic is, parking has been not bad. Once it gets back into operation, we're gonna have our plugged up streets again. We do not have the parking to handle anything. If they put anything in that building and the way they've got it written, it's pretty oblivious as to what the use of it is. To me, it's a prime site for condominiums. Even though they say it's not, it's gonna be for all folks, it's gonna be, again, I hope you guys look at that as part of the could be possible problem with our area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Is there anyone else in the gallery that would like to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, is there anyone in the gallery that'd like to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, is there anyone in the gallery that'd like to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it's now time for city council to ask questions of the presenters. And I do have members in the queue, Councilor Parker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And first, I do have to leave at ten after five, but I will be participating via teleconference so I can still be part of the conversation. But I wanted to get my questions out before and I appreciate the presentations from everyone affected. My question is, now, maybe Ms. Garing or to the developers representative. Quite often, and I remember being on council when we approved this, back in the day, it shows how long I've been on council, still the youngest guy here, but anyway, conversation for another day. Usually we have a tea party of some sort where we have a, like a proposal of some sort. We invite neighborhoods, citizens to come, ask questions, gather some information, get their Q and A's out and all that kind of stuff. A lot of the information, a lot of the concerns I'm hearing out here today are the unknown and rumors and all that. So Ms. Garing, was there an opportunity to have, or is that up to the city or is that up to the developer? There you go, you're good.
Thank you for that question, Councilor Parker. It is always a suggestion of the planning department that a tea party be held. We made that suggestion to the applicant and it was not done.
Thank you. To the representative, obviously you have a lot of questions being asked of yourself and I don't know if, can you answer a lot of these questions that have been asked today?
Yes, sir, I can.
Oh, well, that's all right. I'll ask the question, we ask the question. So, so my first question to you is, what is the intent of, I'm guessing, and I'm guessing what I'm hearing in the audience is that they're concerned that any age group can move in here, it could become some a housing, a housing project, which could be a positive thing, but there really are no guidelines in place. So can you help me reassure these folks of what is going to happen here on behalf of the developer?
So we, we don't know. We don't have a firm sale right now. My clients are interested in trying to sell their property and there is a very limited number of senior citizen housing providers out there that are interested in buying a facility in Lethbridge. And as I've said, in order to increase the marketability of the property, to remove the age restriction, that's, that's the primary goal here. And that doesn't change the permitted uses, which are assisted living and supportive living. So not just anything can go in this facility. And anything that someone would want to do with this facility would need to come before council and all of that information would be presented at that time.
My last question for right now, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. Is the developer or the, the building owner willing to have an open house to answer all the questions that were asked today to give reassurance to not only council, but more importantly, the people in the audience? Would your, would your client be willing to do that?
I, I'm not sure without having checked in with them. We opted not to as we thought the nature of the amendment was quite simple and our clients aren't the ones
Okay. And my last question before I do have to leave here, and I appreciate that, to Ms. Garing, can this body, that being council, give direction to table it and to go back, to talk to the community, to explain what is the intended purpose? Can we give that direction?
I, I will perhaps defer that question to Mr. Lowen.
Council has a couple of options if they wish to not make a decision today. You could leave the public hearing open and continue it on a future date. Alternatively, you could direct new advertising and a new public hearing de novo. Unfortunately, that would have the negative effect of all the people who spoke today. You wouldn't be considering that. So, the better option in that case would be to continue the public hearing and go forward from there.
But the concern of continuing a public hearing, and correction, if I'm wrong, Mr. City Solicitor, is that we'd only be allowed and privy to listen to information that is in this chambers, and we wouldn't be able to gather other information unless all of us are around the table. Am I correct? There's a risk to that?
Yeah, that's correct. You, you would have to limit your interaction and gathering information to the public hearing on today's date, or whatever future date you chose to continue it.
But one of us could set a direction to send this back, to have a tea party, to have a Q and A. Would that be considered a public hearing, or would that be a whole new public hearing that would happen after the fact? Because then people would be coming with opinions based on facts versus misunderstandings or rumors.
I think if, if you wanted to go back to that stage of our ordinary development pro, process, the best way to do that would be to defeat the bylaw at, at second reading and, and begin again, because the intention of a tea party is to happen even before first reading of the bylaw.
I think the latter is what you've pretty much answered to me. Thank you very much. And please, I understand, I will be here, but I will just be on, I have to, another appointment, but I will be participating as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You. Counselor Middleton-Hole.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is certainly an interesting discussion. I wonder if Ms. Shuffelmeyer could come up again to respond to a couple of questions. Now, Ms. Shuffelmeyer, I don't mean, I don't appear, at least I don't mean to appear to be pedantic, but I'd like you to define for me what senior citizen is.
As I understand it, it's an individual over the sixty-five or older.
Well, Denny's defines that as age fifty-five, so I'm just, just wondering, when you talk about a senior citizen, what that might look like. The people in the room here are my age, so I'm just wondering, is, are, are we going to be excluded from being able to rent a place in this, in this new vision that you have for this building?
I, I'm not sure I understand your, your question. We're asking to remove that wording to be more inclusive of...
Well, I'm just wondering, it, it currently caters to people that are of a particular age, right? Whatever that happens to be. And you're, you want to remove that so that people of a particular age can no longer...
No, sir. We want to remove that so that any person who needed assisted or supportive living and services could live in that building.
Right, okay.
So, seniors or individuals who are not seniors.
Right, okay.
So, we're not removing any spaces from anyone.
So, those people that are, were living in the building now are, have been asked to leave?
Yes, and they were relocated to another one of my client's facilities on the west side. No one's been thrown out, as has been implied.
Just wondering if you're familiar with the term renovation.
Yes.
This, would this apply in this case, do you think?
Like, are, are you asking for renovating the facility?
Yeah, so you're, you've, you've asked people to leave the facility under the guise of doing a renovation for a different purpose. Is that correct?
No, we've asked people to leave the facility because we're selling the facility. And there are people that are there right now are there for security, but the facility is not vacant. There's no renovations going on.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. You, you've provided me with some additional insights. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think we have to remember, Your Worship, to stick to the land use questions that are in front of us, not hearsay and not what's going on inside. This is all about a land use amendment. I just want us to remember that. Counselor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone who made a presentation. Most of my questions got answered during that, all of the presentations, but as I see it, the application is to take a current direct control bylaw and eliminate two words from it to make a new direct control bylaw. And the two words are apparently discriminatory, because they're age limiting. And therefore, I, I think this council, or the city in this council, is treading on thin ice by doing, or, you know, by, by having a discriminatory land use amendment, basically is what I'm looking at. And maybe there's enough lawyers in the room, we can probably get that, that answer. But is it a legitimate planning concern, is what I'm asking? I agree, it's probably best not to proceed with second reading on this one, if that's the concern we have, because I, I don't, I don't want council to be put in an awkward position. So, the other concerns I had were with the parking and, and other uses that might be anticipated or, or could go into this building. But those answers have come, so I'm good.
If I may, the Planning Department has acknowledged that the existing land use bylaw right now, that does have a number of references to senior citizens in it, is problematic as well, and have expressed an intention to remove that wording in future iterations of the land use bylaw. Perhaps they could speak to that for you, but it, it is a concern with a number of things, not just our specific bylaw, which forms a part of Land Use Bylaw 6300.
If there's, if there's a question of council to, to planning, they, they can make that question. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. I do have one, one question here, and, and I know one was regarding a tea party hem, but for parking for, and I'm not sure who from, from planning could answer this, but we heard a question about parking for, for cars. Now, currently, that particular facility, as far as what the parking is, is this a grandfathered in clause, or is this, the amount of parking is still suitable? If we were to put a facility like this in a new area of town, what would parking requirements be?
All the regulations and development requirements are specific to the site. At the time, in 2003, that's what the Planning Department and the developer agreed in terms of a suitable parking number for the use they were proposing. If we look at the land use bylaw at a similar use, which would be supportive housing, supportive housing in the land use bylaw is different than this, because in the land use bylaw, supportive housing, it's capped at, I believe, a number lower than sixty people. So, that use wouldn't apply here. But if we look at that use, which has a similar description, the parking requirement is zero. There are parking requirements for employees working at the site. So, if a similar property was applied for in a greenfield area, and they were proposing a supportive housing use, we wouldn't have any parking requirements for tenants here.
It'd be zero parking requirement, okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I'm just not sure, I, I see that Counselor Croson's hand has been up for some time, I just wasn't sure if it was left up.
He's right next in line.
Oh, okay, awesome. Thank you. I just didn't want to jump in ahead. Quick question, if I can, through, to, 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 if I can, because the questions are asked by the public, because there's some unknowns. So, I'm wondering if we could give some, some understanding. With this amendment, what types of occupations could occur at this location? And if we can reference something that currently exists in, in the community, that would be helpful to, it's always nice to say, it would be like having, I don't know, Sunny South Lodge plunked down here. Because I do understand that this was zoned for seniors. Obviously, the folks, I, I won't speak for them, but they're getting out of the business. So, I can't tell you, no, you have to stay in business. But if we kind of knew what this amendment would allow to go here, because in some of the language, it talks about continuing the supportive housing use, or assisted living use, and so, but then in some of the texts, it says that supportive housing is a separate use. So, I'm just, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what could go here.
So, thank you for the question, Counselor Carlson. The two definitions as permitted uses, assisted living residential care facility, supportive living residential care facility, those are the only two permitted uses.
So, it's the difference between supportive living and supportive housing, is that?
So, again, in 2003, these were specific definitions that were designed for this site. They weren't in Land Use Bylaw 4100. We currently don't have these definitions in Bylaw 6300. Okay, so this is a custom use, right? And the things that are happening here are supports for people that can't live independently. So, currently, we don't have a facility in Lethbridge for people who have ALS, or MS, or have brain injuries, who actually need care, twenty-four hour care. We don't have facilities like that. The only thing we have are seniors facilities. So, what this does is it takes away that age requirement to allow people who need care to be cared for.
And thank you for that, Ms. Garing, because further that, I, in, within a block of my house, I have four or five assisted living facilities. They're smaller. They, they look about the size of a duplex or a regular house. Is this what we're talking about allowing? Would, would that be allowed here, but it's just a larger scale?
So, perhaps, Counselor Carlson, you're thinking of group homes? That might be in your neighborhood? Yeah. Yeah, the, so, the services that are offered here are not changing. It's just the age of the people that can access them will now be more inclusive. So, you can have younger people who need care come here and get care. You could also have older people who need care come here and get care. That's all we're doing with this amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Actuary Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. My question is more to start with corporate risk. Certainly, we've heard from the community about their concerns, but I had a question about corporate risk, and perhaps Mr. Lowen or city solicitor could answer this. Is there any precedent in any other communities? Have they found similar concerns? Do they have, you know, words like this, like senior citizens in their bylaw? What is the precedent? What is happening in the legal community around this?
I'm sure if we did a comprehensive survey of Alberta municipalities, words that key on user characteristics, like age, wouldn't be uncommon. It's a growing awareness in both the planning and the legal community, and, and just changing as jurisprudence evolves, that, that we become more sensitized to this. This use was first approved in 1992, which is after our Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and yet, just, we weren't conscious enough of things like age to even trigger that a senior's home is really focused on the user as opposed to the, the use that's allowed. And so, the best practice in law today is not to reference individual characteristics of the users of land, and to focus on the land use impacts of a, of a designated use.
And we have other mechanisms that we can use to focus on use if we were to remove the reference to the age.
Yes. So, in, in this case, as Ms. Garing has outlined, the two permitted uses in the direct control are defined as a supervised facility providing twenty-four hour per day care, seven days per week room and board accommodation, housekeeping, recreation, social activity, and may offer optional personal and nursing assistance services. Planning has gone on to clarify that that doesn't mean, because they've outlined particular other uses that would not be subsumed in this, and those include medical and health facility, inpatient, outpatient, resource center, shelter, and supportive housing. What's a little bit confusing, I think, is that the second permitted use is also called supportive living residential care facilities. You heard Ms. Garing outline the reason why that was back in 1992. That was custom designed. But there's also a clarifying statement in the proposed bylaw that says that doesn't include shelter and supportive housing. And so, without a very close technical reading, it would be very easy to assume that this might be turned into, in plain language, a supportive housing, but that the bylaw is actually far more specific and nuanced than that, and only the two uses that are expressly set out in the bylaw would be permitted.
And in your opinion, is there a risk to the city as a corporation if we do not make this change?
A risk to the city would take the form of a, of an individual who was not a senior citizen, perhaps somebody in the circumstances that Ms. Garing outlined with ALS or MS and otherwise needed this kind of service, but was prohibited from, from occupying or renting or this space by virtue of their age. That could give rise to liability under the Human Rights Act or similar legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Lowen. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you, Actuary Mayor Croson. A question, I'm not sure who can answer this. City manager is designate, and it may be Ms. Garing. In hearing what I just did about this land use, you know, the land use bylaw, and I'm, I could only imagine we have a lot of others that have seniors in there, and I, I don't know if that is grandfathered in. Actually, to be very honest, I don't even know if I can say grandfathered in, or that's being age discriminatory at this point. I'm really confused here. But I'm just wondering here, is, is this something that we're actively looking at changing, or is it just when somebody comes forward? Because now I've got a concern of, you know, where are we at with this? It just seems that it's, it's, to me, seems much bigger than what it is, but it sounds like it could be a grand concern.
So, thank you for the question, Mayor Higgin. Council might remember when Green Acres was here for two rezonings. We did not use the senior citizens housing example. They were strictly approved under our seventy-five as apartment buildings. Okay, so that is what the Planning Department is doing moving forward.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. There is no point, Counselor Higgin, in going back to previous development permit approvals, or, or subsequent or previous DC bylaws that talk about senior citizens housing.
But could we be challenged?
So, they were approved under the legislation at the time. I think the point that Mr. Lowen is trying to make is moving forward, we need to adjust those. So, we will be looking at changes to the wording for senior citizens housing, along with other, perhaps, suggestions that may be coming from CSD and the Social Services Integration Group about social uses moving forward. So, those land use bylaw amendments will be undertaken in the next coming months. But at the, the current point, we have not used those definitions when we had new applications coming to us, for the very reason Mr. Lowen explained, so.
Thank you for that. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess the developer could answer this question, I think. I'm, I'm, just, just for my own clarification, with the, with the change in the bylaw saying there's no age restriction, I just wondered, so would the, would a person who wants to move in there, A, do they have to have a disability where they need assisted and supportive housing? And B, can the person still be over sixty-five who needs supportive housing? Who, like, who, what are some of the criteria for getting into this as it is newly, if it is newly rezoned?
So, it would stay exactly as it is now. Seniors would still be eligible to live there, because it's removing the age restriction, period. So, be seniors, it'd also be individuals like you heard about, so, you know, people that are, you know, maybe forty years of age and have some sort of illness that requires the kind of care that the facility offers. It could be someone even my age that's, you know, suffered a traumatic brain injury, or something that requires care of that nature. So, really, it, it could be anyone who requires assisted or supportive living, who can't live independently on their own, that isn't just a senior, but is, you know, of, of any age.
Will, will there be a criteria developed for what, what is, what, what they're expect, or is that the same criteria that you already have for who can move into that facility?
If Seasons was still operating the facility, it would be the same criteria, but I, I can't speak to what a new owner might want to do with their criteria, but they would only be able to operate an assisted living or a supportive living facility under this current land use bylaw. They couldn't do any other uses unless they made an application to council for that change in use. So, they're, they're quite limited, and it's quite narrow.
The other, the other question I just want to get clear is, we hear, and I, I, we hear that people that were there were asked to leave. Could they have stayed there? Or is, was that an ultimatum for, for them moving out because they wanted to change what was going on in the facility?
So, I, I wouldn't phrase it as an ultimatum. It was literally the owners are wanting to sell the facility. It, it wasn't anything to do with the individuals living there. It, it wasn't anything to do with the individuals living there or a change in programming or anything like that. They're, they're trying to sell the facility, so they're clearing out their facility to sell it to someone else because they're no longer operating at that facility. So it had nothing to do with anything besides the sale of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Just, actually, I'm just, another question for you, if you don't, if you don't mind, Ms. Schaffelmeier. So, help me understand this, then. So, so with the building, I think what, when you first came in, the, the idea was to, to sell this facility, and the ability to sell it is, is a lot less in its current, with the bylaw restriction that's in place. So it's not that you're against calling it seniors, it's more or less the saleable of the, the saleable of the property, correct?
That's exactly it.
Thank you. Sir, any further questions from council? Councilor Carlson.
Sorry, Mayor Higgin, just a last question if I can to Ms. Garing, perhaps. Are, are there any current zonings that this, that we have in our, our city that, that could be applicable that, that aren't a direct control? Like a PB or a, I'm just, I'm trying to think of, of something that is, is less prescriptive. If the interest is, is to, to widen the saleability, I'm wondering why not go to a, either a, a, R 75 or a PB or something that is, got a whole bunch of uses. You could throw anything into it.
So, Councilor Carlson, there's a couple of limitations. So firstly, the two definitions that are in this direct control bylaw, as I stated previously, are not in land use bylaw 6300. So they don't appear in any land use district, okay? The only definition that would be close is supportive housing, which has a cap of 25 people, which doesn't work for this location because there's 60 units. If you were going to be looking at something like a multifamily designation in R 75, those are independent units that need their own kitchens. This is not set up in this building to work, so.
Okay, thank you for that. And can you just give me a, a quick snapshot? Because it is, it does talk about supportive living, and it says, but does not include supportive housing. Is that just so it clarifies it from the land, from 6300? Or can you give me a, 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 supportive living is this, supportive housing is this? Or are they the same, just one has a 25-person cap?
So it is hard to compare the definitions, but I would say the main difference is that 25-person count that we have under the existing definition for supportive housing.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. I see no further questions, but I just, I, I suppose I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable at this time of, of declaring a public hearing closed, to be honest with you, and I just wanted to find out from, from city solicitor and if, comments from my colleagues here, a couple of different suggestions was, were answered to, to Councilor Parker. One being that if, if council decided they did not have enough information or thought that the community more, needed more information, they could actually, in second reading, vote against this particular motion. And then the other is to leave the public hearing open, but it's my understanding, we could not gain additional information, because if Council Carlson has information or Council Palladino has information that I don't have, it makes it difficult to go through that process. So there was the two different, is, am I right in saying those are the two different, if, if some of us are uncomfortable and, and, and don't know if there's enough information in, those would be two suggestions, is that correct?
I, I'd say that the second one has a couple of sub options that I'll explain, and I also want to make sure that council was, would be, also be aware of the consequences to the applicant if you voted no on the second reading, which would mean they would need to reapply, again, which would impose certain obstacles for the, for the applicant. Totally possible. You could keep the public hearing open, and then when you continued it on a future day, anybody who is here and anybody new could attend, and you could ask questions, and you could get that new information at that time. You could ask more information from council, but you're right, you couldn't independently of that process seek your own information. The other thing that you could do would be if you closed this public hearing, gave administration some direction, like do something, re-advertise, and you could have a second public hearing. Those are very closely related, and, and, but I, I think you have the gist of it right with the two big broad branches of options, or...
And, and it might, it might just be myself. I, I don't know. I've, is, can, if anybody wants to, Councilor Carlson?
Thanks, Mayor Higgin. Maybe if I can just maybe understand the timelines for that. If council did recess for two weeks and, and continue the public hearing in two weeks, that's a two-week delay. To cancel it, start the process over, is that six to eight weeks? Or am I, again, living in a dream world that it's even that short? I just, I can't recall the timeframes for the advertising getting ducks in a row.
Yeah, the advertising is for two consecutive issues of the Herald. We also have to have the advertisements in ahead of time. So I think with council's schedule, you are probably looking at at least four weeks, potentially six. Again, and, and just to add to what Mr. Lowen said, we can't require the applicant to have a tea party, right? And so I don't know what that means in terms of if the applicant really doesn't want to have one, then you could just be coming back to another public hearing. So, just to consider that. But it's probably six weeks, for sure four, if not six.
Thank you for that. And I may have another question for the, the applicant at some point, if we're still entertaining questions, but I can...
You can, you can ask a question, or just, if it's to reply to a question, that's fine as the applicant. Do you have a question for?
Unless you were replying to my timeframe.
If, if you don't mind. What I was going to say is, like, we, we wouldn't have any other information for you because we don't have a firm sale, so I, I appreciate the, the need for information and the want for me, for information, but I, I would submit that a, the buyer, whoever that is, when we have a firm sale and, and the sale goes through, would be able to answer all of those questions for you. The, the seller really doesn't have any of the information that you or the community seeks, because we're not the ones that are going to be operating the facility anymore.
And, and thank you. And that was going to be actually my question, you can probably stay up there, is, is your client, is getting out of the business, is?
Yes.
So right now, the building is empty?
Yes.
This drags on for years that nobody wants to put a seniors facility in there. It just stays empty.
That's right.
And I, I think, I, I don't think that's quite clear to folks, that, that it's not the city that controls or, or runs these things. It, it, your client is the owner, they have vacated the building, and the current land use, or the land use, the direct control, is an impediment to selling it. Is that?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, so if it never sells, it becomes a, I don't know.
A vacant building that no one can use, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Campbell.
Yeah, I, I'm just putting my two cents worth that I'm, I'm uncomfortable about making a decision today. I just, I feel I'm not quite informed totally about, so whichever direction my colleagues want to go, I, I just, it, it just doesn't feel right to, to say yes or no on this.
And, and I, I think hearing what, what we had just heard here from the applicant, no more additional information is going to come, so there's the decision to, to vote in favor or vote against at second reading, is, is what I see from this. Is there anyone?
Oh, if the, if the, well, thank you. If the landowner isn't willing to provide additional information or host a tea party, then you're not going to get much more information out of here. You might get more people from the neighborhood coming, so it'll just add fuel to the fire, I, I think. I mean, I, I'm proposing that we don't proceed, but, or I'll be on that.
Or, or just go, go to, go to a, a second reading, take that, yeah. Okay? All right, well, you know what? With... Do you know what? It's suggested as a, as a recess, if we'll just recess for five minutes, a bylaw break, and we'll, we'll return here at 5:35. Thank you.
...
...
You'll be fine. Test? All right. Well, we'll, we will come back here. Thank you for your patience. In seeing that it is apparent that there will be no more information to come forward, I think I will now declare this public hearing closed, and this matter may be decided later this afternoon, or I guess this evening, I guess I would call it, following this public hearing. All right, so we will, welcome back to city council meeting. We are regarding bylaw 6353, land use bylaw amendment re 1730 10th Avenue South for a second reading, moved by Councilor Carlson. Be it resolved that bylaw 6353 land use bylaw amendment re 1730 10th Avenue South be given second reading.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Prepared to bring this forward for a debate and vote at this time. I know that oftentimes, when we come to this, and we've just received a lot of information, one of our colleagues will ask for two weeks, but I haven't heard anyone asking for two weeks to sit and ruminate. I don't think there's any point in a further debate or, or discussion from me. We just heard the public hearing, so I'll just open it up for, for any debate from my colleagues.
Debate. Councilor Campbell.
Well, I just, I just want to make, get clarification. We go through this, this first reading, we turn it down, then it ends there, correct?
The sec, second...
There, sorry, second reading?
Yes. The applicant would have to reapply after and go through that process again.
Okay, thank you.
I think it is your opening, closing. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And 14.2 from Counselor Carlson. Closed meeting, land sale 14.2. Be it resolved that the city council direct that the closed meeting discussion with respect to land sale remain confidential pursuant to Section 23 Local Public Body Confidences and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act, and further be resolved that council approve a six-month extension on the closing of the land sale of 3401 26th Avenue North, Parcels 1 and 2, and Sharon Business and Industrial Park to Sumas Property Group Limited with the following terms. Closing date, October 18, 2022. Deposit $39,659, nonrefundable, payable on April 18, 2022. Applied to purchase price if parcel 1 and 2 are closed by October 18, 2022. Further, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. A fairly standard six-month extension for a parcel. I'd ask for my colleagues' support.
No questions or debate, so with that, questions have been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And we are adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Belinda.
Thank you, Belinda.
Take care, everyone.